I'm going to call the regular committee meeting to order. Members present, myself, Kevin Myers absent, on vacation, Dan Whitehall, Lisa Trucca, Mike Sak, that's it. All right, I'll get them to order at six o'clock. Do we have any public participation? Fred, we'll get you when we start our committee meeting with the facts. Yes? Name and address.
My name is Hunter Howell. I live at 531 South Walnut, right around the corner here. I'm here tonight to speak on this whole railcar stage thing. I work for a railcar company. I have been around railcar for about five years now. It's a bad idea, all the way around. Their contaminants go with railcars. They're dirty, they're rusty, they're unsafe. My understanding, you guys are talking about weldings to the track. It's not that simple. You can't weld a railcar to the track. It doesn't quite work that way. You're going to have kids playing around it, you're going to have kids falling on the rails, et cetera. It's just a bad idea, not to mention, it's going to be like singing in a tin can. There can be horrible music from it because it's not going to sound good at all. My opinion, and speaking on behalf of probably most citizens of Desires, we want a conventional stage. And I have an idea of why don't we contact the local Pioneer kids and let them build the stage? Let them give back to the community. Let them give us a true piece of art. You know, let's make this something real, not a junk railcar. And it's just, it's just, like I said, all the way around, a bad idea. It'll look bad, it's going to draw in graffiti. I can't, I don't think I've ever seen a single railcar come through the places I've worked that graffiti on. And that's what's going to keep them from going right down that new mural wall, and I'd hate to see that. So, speaking on behalf of most citizens of Desires, I'd say we all want a conventional stage. And I ask you to listen to, please. That's all I have.
To clarify, this is not in committee, it's not with council, it's with... Who is in charge of this? This is through the committee over Shine Park, which is private and few city officials.
Yeah, well, it's, it's the administration right now is looking into options, so if you guys...
But there's a group of people that is not...
They haven't committed, yeah.
That is not with, this is all private, no? We all don't know. We all, I don't remember if we had anything to say about the stage, but they have to apply for the grant and everything. We don't, we're not directly involved with it as of right now, but we will let you, let them know.
So, I guess it's more directed towards research, isn't it?
I don't know who's all on it, who's all on that.
Because I know he's pushing real hard for this, and I just, it would not be good for Desires.
Okay, we can make sure we get stuff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Doesn't council have to approve the money for whatever...
The money doesn't come, isn't coming from, correct me if I'm wrong, the money's not coming out of our general budget, it's coming from a grant.
It's not coming out of the city at all.
It's not coming from the city funding at all for that, that's a grant.
That grant money does not go into the city general fund and then be paid out of the general fund?
You'll have to ask the honor...
It goes into a special fund. It would run through our books, but the grant money will come into our Art Park Fund and be dispersed from there. And the grant has certain criteria that has to be followed, as far as how the money's handled and that type of thing. I don't know if the state has to approve the design of the stage. They may, they may not. I don't have a copy of the grant, so I don't know. But I know there's criteria and things that have to be followed, and I know they're just looking at options now, and I know that that has been mentioned as one of the options, but I don't know that that's the direction they're going to go. But your input is good, and I can see that he knows that.
So, I really think it'd be a good deal to let the kids Pioneer build it. I really do. Because it's a good way for them to give back to the community, give them experience, and like I said, make it a real piece of art, make it actually something that belongs to them.
I don't disagree.
Aren't those decisions being made under board of control? Is that not the case, Jeff?
Well, it went out to bid, but it did not meet the price that we had capped it at. It actually came in over, so we had to turn that bid down. So, now we're just working through our ORDC to see what other options we can go out out there. We got to 2021, but it's going to be here before we know it.
Right.
Jeff, just to clarify, I was at that last night ORDC meeting, I have to step in there towards the middle end of it. Didn't ORDC say that the bid that was submitted, not only was it over the budget, but it didn't fit the criteria either?
Well, I think it might have been missing part of the sound system. I think it had electric in it, but, and it really wasn't high enough off the ground, but I think it met the specs for the most part. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just, just to follow up on what we were discussing there, as far as the bids, is it possible to set that out for bids again? I mean, I know we've had trouble sometimes where we don't get very many bids on projects, and particularly with the last bid having been turned down, and now there being some, you know, public debate on what type of stage we should have, I think it might be a good idea to reopen this for additional bids. I don't know how that would work, how we, how something like that would work out in terms of, you know, having the kids from Pioneer work on a project like that. I mean, it might be something where they'd be involved, but to me, it seems like that could be opened up for bids again, since we didn't accept the bid the last time.
Well, let's say that we had a bid go out, and they had somebody actually built the stage, but they just built a general stage and then left Pioneer kids decorating, or say?
Well, I think there are certain guidelines to that grant, and I don't have it in front of me, but there's all kinds of criteria that you have to meet to be able to use that grant money. So, I'd have to look into that part.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Start planning committee at 6:07. It's on zoning variance notification protocol. Fred, feel free to jump in anytime. Say your name and address.
Fred Miller, 785 Arrowhead Drive. I just have a couple of questions on the, on the application process. Are the applications screened in any way before they are allowed to proceed with the notifications and all that? And if so, are they, when they are screened, is there a written criteria for that?
I'd have to defer to Landon. I know there is a day review for completeness and to make sure they comply, and I believe there is a, there's a form and instructions, and so there is some criteria as to what you have to fill out, what you have to provide for those, for those applications.
And he had, I do believe he has to go through to make sure if it's in our zoning ordinance or if it's asking for a variance. So, anytime you apply, he has to verify that if there's a need for a variance or not. So, unfortunately, he's not here to answer that. We can get more information from him on that.
So, if a variance is applied for, as long as it, as there's a need for that variance, then it proceeds in a notification procedure, and the variance are on hold.
Correct.
So, none of them are screened, except to make sure that there's a need for the variance.
To the best of my knowledge. I may be incorrect, I don't, I don't have the, I don't have my book with me on, well, I don't have the information on that.
And the process is, when those applications are filed with Landon in the zoning office, he's reviewing them to make sure they're complete and they contain all the information, and they set forth what the requests are and all that, and Landon does a good job of helping the individual make sure that they have that application properly filed. But then the screening is, is the board. I mean, the board conducts that hearing, they conduct that review, they take testimony in, from a litigant with people that are applying, so that is the screening process.
Okay. We, well, we were talking, and we got an app, we had a BCA meeting for three variances Tuesday, and after the meeting, we discussed, on the members on the board, one was not here, but the other three were here, and, what's in the audience right now? And we all came to an agreement that we feel strongly to go with the, having a type of sign posted in the yard, so that it would show the application, so that people driving by could get the information and be able to call. We didn't ask for expanding the 200 feet, because that depends on population, and even if we go to 300 or 400 feet, it may not even hit certain people. I mean, if you were further back in Arrowhead and that other house at the corner was, you wouldn't even, probably even get notified, even at 400 feet or... But if we wanted to make it so that we could publicize it on our website, our Facebook, have a sign, and still do the 200 feet notification to the adjoining neighbors and those across the street or road, whichever applies.
Will you be expanding on that internet available information and be able to look at the application online?
Yes, that's what we wanted to work on. Here's a proposed change amendment to our section 1147.05. Section two, item C, the, 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 the sign shall provide the date of hearing, the type of appeal, variance or other relief requested, the application number as assigned by the zoning office, contact information for the zoning office for any questions, and a link to the City of Desires website directing interest part, interested parties to a full copy of the filed application seeking an appeal, variance or other relief requested. So, we would have it there, so you could click on it and get the information at your convenience.
One last question, then. What will be the time period that the sign will be displayed?
We said 14 days. That's, that's the proposed, in section D, it says, "Visible and present for 14 days prior to the date of the hearing." So, usually our hearings are on Tuesdays at four o'clock, unless otherwise noted, and it would be two weeks, it'd have to be at least two weeks prior, so.
I think it'd be good to read that after the fact that it says, "Failing or post-assigned pursuant to these rules shall require the board of zoning to be able to reject the application, appeal, variance or relief. A violation of these notice rules does not preclude the applicant or property owner filing a new application, paying the filing fee and complying with the notice provisions." So, they are district provisions. I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, but I was just, the fact that after, that says about the 14 days prior to the date of hearing, it says, "Failing or post-assigned pursuant to these rules shall require the board of zoning appeals to reject the application for appeal, variance or other relief." It does say that a violation of these notice of rules does not preclude the applicant or property owner from filing again, but they'll have to pay a new fee and then also comply with the notice provisions. So, that way, they can't hide the sign from you and then, you know, post it out there the last day. So, if it's not out there all 14 days visible, and somebody notices, they can have their repeal or their application rejected just for that.
I'd like to thank the committee for considering the comments that I had, and I appreciate the effort you've made.
Do you have any other suggestions, Fred? I mean, this is just a propose. I mean, we're, we haven't, you know, we don't have to close it today. We'd like to make sure, if there's any other inputs on you, on this, from you or anybody else?
I think it's a step in the, in the correct direction, yes. The 14 days seems a little bit short. People can be out of town for a week, two weeks, and may not, may not see the notifications for more than 200 feet, I think would be very desirable, and I know it's an additional expense involved in that, but you have to, you ask a filing fee for the application, that should be sufficient to cover that, if there's differences.
I do believe that we discussed that, that it would, the sign would possibly raise a fee, $10, and if we go to 300 feet, we'd have to take in an average of different areas of the city on how many people and how much more it would cost. So, I can't tell you what the price would be, but there would possibly have to be a significant amount of change. Is it now 50 cents?
55, I think.
55 cents to mail a letter, so, you know, 10 letters is another $5.50, and let alone all the time for the person to get all the address, addresses and everything.
My reason for suggesting a larger notification area is, a next door neighbor would be the only one that notified in writing, and it's, there can be changes that affect the entire neighborhood.
Correct.
More people need to be notified.
Okay. All right, we can discuss that. We haven't, like I said, we haven't closed this yet, so. You'd like to see it at least 300 feet?
I would not...
Well, that's all right.
...make sure how many feet it should be, but if you only have one or two people that are notified in writing, then those one or two people are making a decision that could affect the entire neighborhood. So, the whole street.
Maybe you could do something to the effect of, you know, 200 feet or up to a certain number of households that you mail to, so that, you know, within a certain proximity, that way, you know, there's more than, you know, if a person lives unblocked, and there's not a lot of homes on, at least it's going to up to 10 homes, you know, within the nearest radius to that house, so there's, you know, a certain number of mails, mailings that go out on every case. But, you know, in a case where there's, you know, a very tight neighborhood, you're just sticking with the 200 feet rule. Something like that possible? I'm just thinking of compromise there, and I, you know, might work, that way at least you're... But then again, that could also lead to you getting, getting 600 feet out to get to 10 homes too, so.
Bill?
One of the issues I was concerned with when we had the board meeting, and I kind of stated those words, that I would like to see the information posted on the city website as well, and maybe on the city's social media site as well. One of my main reasons for that was because of the fact that, as Mr. Miller stated, was that people might not be home for a period of two weeks there, and that would also cause an issue with them not receiving the notice in the mail as well. If it was posted on the Facebook page, on the city's website page, then if they were away from home, they would be able to access that information, see them. And beyond that, that would be up to them if they wanted to.
Right.
You're not asking for a vote of the people that are notified, you're asking for input, and it's still up to the zoning board of appeals to make the decision, yea or nay?
That's right. But we do take into consideration the input from the neighbors as well, and the community.
So, we had a, we had an, we had an appeal, a variance. We granted a variance to a person on a, I won't go into the description where, but they applied, and most of our appeals that they, we get, we might have one or two responses out of 20 letters. This one had seven, I think it was seven.
Five.
Five, five responses, which is totally unusual. And we took in consideration of some of their problems that they expressed on that, and we granted the variance, but with conditions to it, where they had to come back in a little more than what they wanted and change some things to accommodate, like the water runoff and a few other things. So, you know, that's what we tried to do. We tried to take in consideration any of the responses that come in. We had, you know, a ton of we can't do anything about, but most of them we try to accommodate.
That's what is important, Mark, that there's a common sense approach, that there are times when a variance needs to be granted, and there's a legitimate reason for that.
Right. Okay. All right, well, we can, we'll take into consideration to put on more notification, and we'll work on a determining a radius of how far out to go, and we'll work on some more revising this a little bit more for you. Does anybody else have any comments or input for this committee? Anybody have any more questions or comments about this? I'd like to table it till our next meeting, so we get some more time to put some more information into it. Without, with that...
I think Mr. Frank, as we're trying to hear you.
How do you guys speak up?
There could be a thing where you stick to the 200 feet directly around, but then in addition to that, you send something to the whole street to the next block, and then that would have took care of like the whole Arrowhead Drive for Mr. Miller's situation there, and it would keep things, the block would keep things from going like way too far, you know?
Fairly, we'll take that into consideration. All right, is there anything else? All right, I will adjourn at 6:23.
I will have the finance committee meeting to order at 6:23.
Mr. Chair, could we view the appropriations for the financial...
Sure. Yep. Appropriation, please.
Okay. We need appropriation in the general fund, program one, security of persons and property. In the police department, $1,000 for materials and supplies line. This is from a donation that we have received for safety accounts, so we need to appropriate that money. Also, in fire levy, in the fire department category, $50,000 to... This is from a Marx grant, of that has been approved, for new radios for the fire department. So, we need to, this is going to be an in and out. That money will be coming to us, and we'll be spending it, it will change the balance, but we have to appropriate that $50,000.
Make a motion to approve the various appropriations. Second?
First by Dan, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then the other thing I had was, on this reduction piece that was passed, previous meeting, I apologize, I didn't discover until I went to post it, I had made an error in the department number, and instead of 7111, it should be 7728, victim advocate. I don't know if we need to amend, or if we need to repeal and replace, that's up to the board.
It's one of the, it's 61, half dozen of the other, I mean, it really doesn't matter. It's going back to 61, 2018, though, is that the, that's the, that's the annual appropriations budget, right?
Yes.
So, also, so we should repeal 16, 2019 and replace it?
Yes.
With just that one change, that's the only...
Yeah, because it goes back to the original, it's just a regular, didn't go back to that.
So, I'll make that motion to repeal and replace that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we feel 16, 2019 and replace it with whatever the new number will be.
First by Dan, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then to the, the fee to allow loan application. Brett, on that discussion?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to give a refresher of what that loan is for, you know, we passed that in the budget back in 18 through 19, and that is in compliance with the US EPA for storm and sanitary separation. Right now, we have, group two is out to bid already. Group one will probably go out in a month, and maybe to West Elm Street, probably by the end of the month, and they're starting to work on group three A. So, this loan was up to four million at zero percent, and I do believe it's 25 to third year payback. You know, if we fail to continue on with this and have them stop, because we're in a five to seven year agreement with the US EPA, we have to put in reports every six months to let them know where we're at with our plan, that administrative order that we signed back in 15 is a five to seven year plan. So, you know, if it would fall back into US EPA's hands, we could get a mandate, we could get a fine, they might impose $75 a month each resident in order to pay for it. So, but this loan was zero percent, and right now, I got Branstad or Carroll, which, we've been through all this with the budget, it's all passed, I just want to make sure that we're still heading down that right road, or I'm going to have to stop Branstad or Carroll from doing any more work.
So, has, has all our engineering already been completed, or how, up to what phase of the project?
Well, group two is out to bid now.
Right.
Group one is getting ready to go out, we got to get a few easements, and then, I think we have a couple easements left on West Elm and Mansfield, but group three A is the one that would probably be in the late fall to go out to bid.
And, and do we go, and we go out and get these loans in stages as we're getting ready to complete state level projects?
Correct, yes. And this would be the first installment of the million. Bruce couldn't tell me if we have to start paying it back next year, or we have to wait till the whole group's done, or till we spend up to our allotted three and a half to four million dollars, we get it to or if so.
What happens to resolution 224-2017 that we passed on 8/3/2017? What's the exact same language as this? Where did we pass this? Is this another loan, or is this that same?
No, it's the same loan, but they need a resolution now to let us move forward.
What happened to that? We passed it, I looked it up in the notes.
I have to check on that, hey, I'm just telling you what...
It's 224-2017, it's a resolution. You know, as far as I knew, this was another loan.
No, this is all part of that original, but we haven't, we haven't had any...
No, this is all part of that original, but we haven't, we haven't had any money passed through our system yet. So this is the first request on that loan. And that all comes down to stormwater enterprise.
But we're already, we've already raised sewer rates and we're collecting that number, right?
It's called a storm separation, the seven?
The ten percent.
Well.
Raised ten percent.
Three percent on the sewer.
Ordinance forty-seven dash twenty seventeen, we raised the sewer rates on October third, twenty seventeen. Remember when we raised the sewer rates?
Yeah, but it's, there's two different, the sewer rate increase under the sewer fund was the three percent annually. The storm separation fee of the seven twenty is the U S E P A mandate of how we're going to help pay for that. So that's two different, that goes into the stormwater fund, which is a separation fund, and that's the only thing it can be used for. With the three percent.
We raised those rates ten percent, something like that.
We raised water rates ten percent. And the first initial rate might have been ten percent, but it's not.
It was towards, before these new guys came on. Remember?
Yeah, we raised the sewer rates.
Because we, we had to decide, was it seven percent or was it, was that three percent on our?
I think the first initial was, if you are correct, but then after that, I think it went three percent, three percent.
Yeah, we had already raised it three percent every year, so when, then they came up with this ten percent, they need this ten percent. So it was, and when the discussion was, is that ten percent plus this three percent we're already raising, or is that seven percent plus the three?
Correct.
So we've already raised these rates, and now you're telling me we haven't even got the loan yet, but there was a resolution passed, so I'm confused, I don't know, I'm confused why we passed a resolution in August and, which was basically, I didn't read the whole thing, but the ending was the same, was the same as this one. So I don't know.
That's all I have. I don't know what you guys put in, you do whatever you want. Well, I'll go back and research which one you're talking about there.
I guess I spent half, I didn't look those up to see, I'm sure we did that. So we had a first reading audit, right? So all you need to do is, when he gets back, he'll have enough, he'll probably have enough to pass it if he wants, so I don't even know why we're revisiting this, unless you're afraid someone else was going to broke the law.
Is the stormwater separation fund that is on the utility bill not bringing in enough money to pay for these stormwater separation projects?
For the first set of four that we got going, it wouldn't raise enough money in a year to cover one of these projects.
So it's bringing in less than a million a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I have no idea what it's bringing in, I always wondered if, where that money, so that money that's going repay these loans?
Part of it would, but we got a twenty-five to thirty year that we can pay that back.
Okay.
Didn't the, wasn't there a four dollar fee that started in the year two thousand?
Something, I, I don't know the exact date, but it started around two thousand.
And that was for these projects?
Yeah, that was.
So where's all that money if you just?
And then the seven twenty is part of that too. So.
When, not this Jeff, the other Jeff first introduced this, I don't know if any of you remember that, he said, this, this zero percent loan is going to help us do other things like tie-ins, these, do the tie-ins and all this other stuff. So I know, you know, I don't know where, it seemed like it was just a bonus, you know, I don't know where, if we don't do this, where the EPA's going to come down on this stuff. Anyway, I don't know.
I'm just telling you it could, that would be more of a wrong question, but if we do have this, this administrative order signed, agreement with the U S E P A of a five to seven year plan, and like I said, we've got to do a report every six months through Arcadius, through the U S E P A to get approved, that we're moving in the right direction.
The seven dollars and twenty cents that we're collecting or everybody's paying, that's only, that's only doing the stuff, that's certain project, that's doing Woodlawn area, sewer separation in Woodlawn and Roger Street and type of thing.
Well, yes, eventually it'll get to that, but right now, we're still on the outskirts of, over in Robin Hood and Sherwood area, that B right there with Hopely, that's group three A, group two is Union Street, Highland, no, I'm sorry, group two is Union Street, Highland, and part of Westone. And then group one is actually the Hopely, Sherwood, Cullen Avenue, Cullen Court, to get all that separated, and then three A is the Cross Street, and I think John Street's in there, and so these, and then also part of Mansfield and Westone Street, which we want to bring another tile out to help alleviate flooding in the Penn Avenue, Wayne area, that area. So that's all part of this three point five million that we're working on right now. But Woodlawn is on the board as we get the outer part done to start moving in, to start separating those streets.
But that's part of the, the outer part is not?
Yes.
Jeff, as far as the overall scope and size of the project though, from the beginning, I mean, I know that we, there's stages to it, but it hasn't changed in terms of, it hasn't increased in?
No.
Overall size?
No, maybe just some rerouting of piping to which way we were going, but the size has still stayed the same. I'm hoping that, and I'm trying to be an optimist, that I think we got more of the city separated than EPA's giving us credit. So once we get this done and maybe we do see less activations with the C S O's opening, maybe we will get told, okay, hey, you know, you can slow down a little bit, or you can stop. I don't know that, but as of right now, we're on our first five to seven year plan.
And then, just kind of following up on that, the project's not over budget or anything like that at this point?
Not at this point, I, they're not, they're not aware of, no.
Okay, I mean, I just, now they're kind of curious, I want to read resolution two twenty-four twenty seventeen, because I don't know if that's available.
I'll have to check, but unless you have it in front of you, I believe two twenty-four twenty seventeen, if the caption refers to stormwater facilities, this refers to wastewater facilities. I'm not exactly positive on that, but I seem to recall that's the reason for this resolution to be allowed to go.
So is this replacing the two?
That's what I think so. I mean, that's a question for Branstad.
So I, I guess I'm just tabling the discussion, so, you know, we'll have time to review that unless there's any other.
Well, what I can do is obviously if Bruce can attend the next council, we can have that. That work?
Thanks, Jeff.
Is it okay to ask a question?
It is.
Do you ever dip into the water funds and pay other things?
You can't.
Oh, you can't do that?
No. Each fund has to run on its own, just like your house, I mean, you, you get it in that fund and it has to stay in that.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I, a couple previous meetings, you said something about taking funds from?
She's, you're misunderstanding, there's certain.
Probably.
Joyce can explain it better, but certain pay, certain positions are paid by taking twenty percent out of certain funds.
That's what it was.
Now that. That's, that's set up. Yeah. There's a lot of positions in the city that are over different departments that get split of salaries or they're paying. He can tell you better too.
So it's not water money going into a fund to pay, because you guys got new phones or something? It was like?
Right, there was, there was a phone system that was, the cost of it was split out of multiple funds to pay for.
Out of three funds, it seems like it was water, sewage, and?
Well, it was several, I don't remember every one.
Each of them was paid a certain amount of.
Yeah, it's, it's shared across all categories because all categories are utilizing the phone system, so that's.
Streets was in on that.
Everybody, streets department.
So you took water money out of, out of the fund, like the water money, and paid for phones?
For their share.
Yeah, I mean, I.
For their share.
For their share.
And I think that, wasn't that sixty-eight thousand dollars per fund?
Yeah.
I just barely heard, just barely picked up on twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent equaling, and I thought, wow, that's a lot, but nothing more to say. And then I'm like, did they dip into that water fund and that sewage fund and?
It's strictly regulated, and Joyce knows you can only take certain portions out. She got it by the book on delegating how much money can go where, and you can't, like he said, it goes, water goes to water, except certain portions paid for like, when he was working for the water department and the sewer department, or he still, he still are.
Still, eventually.
Yeah, so he gets paid from the sewer, the water, his position, and there's other positions that are paid that way, and it's by, the state has it set up, that's how you can pay them, probably because they're involved with those departments. Joyce can explain it better than I can, that's, that's how I can explain it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, basically, you can't, you can't go out into water fund and say you need to order material for a water line and then bill it to the street fund, you can't do that. It has to be funded whatever the department chooses, if that makes sense.
I think the example too, Kathy, with the phones that you were talking about, that was a total cost for the phone system for the entire city, and that was split up amongst all the departments evenly, so that way they all paid their portion of what that phone cost was. So that was why it was split up amongst all departments, because they got the phone system, they got the phone system, so it was just evenly spreading it out amongst all the city funds.
Gotcha, thank you. Anything else? I will recess the finance at six forty-two. If we have any more qualifications? None? Can I have a motion to adjourn to the regular committee?
Go.
You love that part, I don't know, it's going to be on TV too.
I said TV.
Oh, I didn't say TV, I was going to say social media and internet.
Oh, wow.
It'll be on the access channel too.
Um, I have Dan's room.